We will call the meeting to order. Amy, if you would do the roll call, please.
McEvers?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Gookin?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Edinger?
Here.
We would rise for the invocation by Ron Hunter, our first choice from the Church of Nazarene.
Holy Father, we step into your presence tonight with grateful hearts for the privilege of living in a great country and in a beautiful place. But we need your help, and so I come to ask that you will aid these council members tonight. They will hear the issues and perhaps see the options, but none of us can see very far out ahead of us. In your word, you tell us that if we lack wisdom, we can ask of you, and you will give us generously. And so tonight, I would ask wisdom for these council members, and I would ask that you would bless them not only with that, but with your favor. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight? Don't believe we do. So we will move on to the next part of the agenda tonight, which is a presentation, a Four Corners project update from Phil Boyd and Del Hatch.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So we were requested to give a brief update and status report, and so we'll quickly move through that out of the respect of the time. The first thing I wanted to start with was the review committee, and I think some of you may know the members of it, but you can see here the members that are part of the review committee. Although this is a little challenging to see on the board, this process demonstrates our schedule. There's task orders there or task items under each one of those that show our process of moving from about when we started in August through into completing in about February. It might be a little later in February because some of the challenge of scheduling with many of the meetings. You can see that we have review committee meetings shown in the red color there, workshop meetings with the public shown in the yellow, and then green public informational meetings that we'll also be conducting. You guys can feel free to ask questions as I'm moving through. Summary of meetings today, one of the things that we had focused on in working on this project was reaching out to as many groups as we could in order to sit down across the table with them and really understand some of their input. As you might remember, the city conducted a number of public meetings last year. There was about, I think, four of them. Somewhat about 70 comments were received from a diversity of groups, and we went through and looked at the number of groups and ones that had provided commentary and have reached out and sat down with them. Cootney County, the Foregrounds Homeowners Association, along with Coeur d'Alene North, other homeowners association, Disability Action Center, Coeur d'Alene Tribe, the Human Rights Museum. And our intent was to be able to sit and talk to them and understand what their vision might be in that planning area. Obviously, it's easier to do that around a table than in a big public hearing, and they've been extremely productive meetings. Those meetings have been attended by Del Hatch and I. Steve Anthony, Bill Greenwood have been the kind of the team part of it. That information is getting reduced into meeting minutes. Steve Anthony, we're forwarding those up to Steve, and I think he may be forwarding them on to council once he's got them all compiled. Because the objective is, is to keep certainly the review committee and possibly if Steve advances them to the city council, you in the loop as we're working on the project. If you happen to have questions as we're working on the project, those can obviously come forward to us rather than waiting to the very end.
Excuse me, Phil. I'm sorry. Question just came to mind when I seen DEQ up there, and forgive me if this has been asked before or was in the minutes. I didn't have time to read them. Is there any environmental concerns with the property? I don't think we're suddenly going to become a superfund site or anything like that.
Not that I am aware of. The purpose of DEQ's involvement is they are interested in participating in stormwater demonstration projects where if there's opportunities to demonstrate different technologies or different treatment techniques for stormwater that may come off the city streets or other urbanized areas on how to treat that as opposed to the conventional grassy swale. That's one of their interests. Their other interest is the erosion along the Spokane River embankment, and they have funding and opportunities, and there's some partnerships that can be formed there.
Okay, thanks.
I don't see the skate park up there. Did I miss that? Or, sorry, somebody has to ask.
I think we're...
They're in there somewhere?
No, they're not up there, but we're meeting with the skate park on...
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Thank you.
There's a, there's a, they're all small groups, but there's a diversity of groups, and if Del's been talking to the skate parks since the inception of the project, actually met with them once, and we're going to meet with them again.
Thanks.
Upcoming committees, city departments, that's pretty big. We're focusing on obviously the infrastructure department, so water, sewer, planning, streets, to make sure that we understand all the issues that the city departments may have. We don't want to overlook something or projects they may have that may dovetail into it. City committees, those are the ones that the teams identified that we would like to meet with and solicit their feedback. We've got two community workshops in October and November, and in that setting would be intended to be very interactive with the community, to be able to have a discussion with them. The six review committee meetings, which will be up in the old city hall council chambers, and then the two other, three other public meetings with the LCDC and the council meeting presentations. So to this point, it has been a very productive meeting with the small groups, lots of good input and ideas coming from them. And if there's no questions for me, I'll turn it over to Del, and he'll talk a little bit about the planning area.
Any questions for Phil at this point?
These maps represent the overall planning area of the corridor, and this one starts on the east end of the corridor. Lower right, let's see if I can get you a, Independence Point is here. This large circle designated as Zone A is the traditional Four Corners area that houses Memorial Field, City Park, the waterfront along City Park, Mullen Avenue through here, the parking lot adjacent Northwest Boulevard. This is the county campus here, LCDC ground. And then the BLM corridor property starts right about here, about midway through the existing skate park, and it starts to extend eastward. We've developed these into large study zones to sort of grasp the general areas that we're looking at in more detail to start with. So as we move more westward, as we march through these maps, you'll see that we get up close to the 95 Bridge. Zone B takes in what was historically the Harbor Center area. The areas in blue represent city-owned ground through this area. There's sewer treatment plant in this area. This is private ground adjacent Northwest Boulevard, and bisecting both the city ground and that private ground is the BLM corridor that moves through this area. This is sort of a transition area on that north side of 95 Bridge that we're looking at. That's where our Centennial Trail would move through and under the bridge. That's where the potential for a confluence of the commuter trail is being discussed at this point. Moving further west, you can see that the large green swath through here is also the BLM corridor. And the BLM corridor, for the purposes of the study where we will evaluate what recreational and other opportunities can occur in, that study stops at that point, right here. So whatever comes out of our study and what uses we propose and the public puts forth to us, those are the uses that will go to the master plan that the BLM will review and hopefully give us approval for that will allow us to lease it and hopefully in the long run get patent ownership. And this area is, this is probably the largest open area of the corridor. On the north, it's bordered by the Union Pacific Right of Way. We don't have ownership to that. That one is a critical piece of ground. If we were to get access either through it or to have ownership of that, then we could come off of La Crosse that kind of diagonally crosses Northwest Boulevard, gives us vehicular access directly into it. We are looking a little bit further to the west. Not quite that far. Let me back up just a minute. This is the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad Right of Way shown in orange, and it kind of jogs right through here. The blue again is city-owned property. Down here along the waterfront and Bella Reve Homeowners Association, that is private, about 30 feet right along the water. So you can see that throughout the corridor, there's a lot of adjacent private ground, there's adjacent city ground. So that's one of the reasons that Phil mentioned, we're talking to some of these small groups. They have a direct adjacent interest in some of the activities and things that can be developed there. And then we're doing a little bit of study along with this one. As we move down towards Riverstone, we're going to be exploring what the linkages of trail development and stuff might be as we move further west through that Burlington Northern Santa Fe Right of Way that the city's in pursuit of ownership right now. Any questions on a general planning area?
Questions?
Dan? Mr. Mayor. So I have a question. Hello. When council approved hiring you guys for this, the contract talked about the BLM property. When did it change from a BLM master plan into a corridor Four Corners project?
Well, the, it's my understanding that the RFP for the project, it's always been termed Four Corners BLM Corridor. Four corners, at least in my mind, being the easternmost end of that corridor.
I just don't remember it going so far south.
Let me back up here so I see the... Down into this area?
Yeah, to Independence Point specifically.
I think that, it's been my understanding, Councilman Gookin, that the Four Corners, and we've identified the Four Corners generally as that circle, has always included the area of City Park. In the RFP, it was described as looking at improvements potentially to Independence Point, City Park, the waterfront walk along City Park, the Memorial Field Baseball Field, et cetera.
I'll have to read it again because when I read it, I did not see it go that far. So I will read it again. I do have a couple of other questions. There was an article in the paper about your walkthrough, and in that article, it mentioned that there was a meeting that took place where people wanted to express their ideas freely. Can you share with us what those ideas were?
Well, I can share with you what that meeting was on the tour that we took. This map actually, these series of maps that you're looking at today were handed out to the group that went on that tour. Purpose of that walkthrough was to familiarize our steering committee. Some of them had been just recently appointed to our committee. There were a couple of city staff that also attended. Not everybody on our committee was fully familiar with the corridor and the areas of studies that our proposal said that we would be looking at in detail. So the purpose of that meeting was to walk the corridor, orient our steering committee as to Zone A, what it included, moving on to Zone B, et cetera.
And what were the questions that were asked?
Well, I think the questions were asked, you know, what have we heard from the public so far that might be applicable in this area? For instance, in the Four Corners area, they asked about Mullen Avenue and what were some of the public comments that had been received so far. Some of the, some of those comments, and I'll paraphrase, suggested that they might close Mullen Avenue. Some said, let's calm the traffic or slow it down. Let's look for opportunities to maybe increase the parking. Let's make it much safer for people to cross. So we shared, we shared what we knew at that point, and really at that point, without further direct public input, have come from those past meetings of a year ago.
There was also mention that of multimillion-dollar projects. Can you shed some light on what those could be?
I don't recall any multimillion-dollar projects being discussed, you know, in terms of what dollar cost would be to projects. We discussed the potential to, and what it might take to fully renovate Memorial Field's existing grandstand. There are some structural issues that we know of, and historically, there's been some structural issues with that grandstand. We talked in general that that could be a very expensive fix, you know, to go in and fully revitalize that grandstand. We talked about those types of issues.
I understand that this is, you know, the start of a process and that you're getting a lot of feedback, and I think that's really good. I read the minutes that was, were distributed today that talked about how you're meeting with the various groups, and especially, I'm a member of the Foreground Homeowners Association, and some of those ideas were expressed. I thought that's really good, and it's good for you guys to hear from everyone. I know that I have received private concerns from the Human Rights Institute and from the museum regarding, well, they're nervous. And it said on the slide earlier that you met with them yesterday. So can you just tell me how that's going?
Actually, I thought it was a very productive meeting. Phil, you can chime in as well. We spent probably an hour and a half with them. I think a lot of the same comments that were discussed almost 10 years ago when the Four Corners was being looked at in the preliminary master planning study were expressed again by the library folks. They're looking for a new home. They'd like to see a new facility. They have, their fundraising efforts have stalled or been put on hold somewhat, but they said, they told us they had about $200,000 raised towards a new facility.
Which entity was it?
The museum.
Museum, okay. Thanks.
And they shared with us what their latest floor plan building would be of about 27,000 square feet. They had, I think they expressed that they hoped they could always be located somewhere within this Zone A or the Four Corners area. Years ago, 10 years ago during that preliminary study, they were cited as a potential location somewhere in direct vicinity of where the old Kerr Oil site was.
I remember seeing that.
They still expressed an interest in that. Human rights education folks shared with us what they would like to do. They've also had some past studies on potential expansion of the building therein. That building also has some structural issues historically that I know everybody is concerned about. They, we also met with Carousel during that time, and I know the Carousel people and museum people expressed the potential for them to possibly be in a joint facility or in such a location that, you know, it could be very close if not attached.
I look forward to seeing how this progresses then. Thank you.
Any other questions for Del and Phil?
Can you review just one more time? How many public meetings have you gotten scheduled in that Gantt chart you had?
I think we have two public workshop meetings, and then we have three public presentation meetings.
And then are you planning on having the minutes from these meetings available on the city website or your own website so anyone could read them?
I'm not sure if we've worked that out. Everything we're doing, and you've seen some of the record-keeping, we're giving that to Steve Anthony, and it can be distributed and probably set up on your website.
Thank you.
Del and Phil, oh, go ahead, Ron.
When's your next meeting?
Back up to our schedule here and see. Which, which one, with one of the small groups or with a steering?
With the, with the group, different groups, like the Carousel people, the museum.
I think, I think today may have concluded most of our, our small group meetings, with the exception, we're meeting now with the skateboard folks on Wednesday of next week. I have yet to schedule a meeting with the Idaho Workers Memorial, although I've made contact with Brad Cedar Blum about sitting down with us and talking about his memorial that he'd like to find a home for as well.
On the, the community workshops, for people that want to become involved in that, how will, I would imagine it's going to be on our website, but will also be in the newspaper? How are we going to get the word out to all the folks that would like to be involved in those discussions?
Mr. Mayor, I think you've identified the two primary ones. We've been working with Keith on Keith Erickson, developing the way we're going to reach out, certainly all the groups that we have been meeting with. As part of the community workshop, one of the things we want to do is reach out and engage many of these folks to actually participate in the workshop. So for instance, we talk about the North Idaho Centennial Trail Foundation. We've met with them. As we develop ideas, rather than us being a part of the workshop, only us, we can also have members from the Centennial Trail Foundation participate, and we realize that they're going to reach out and bring their groups in and notify them. So we plan on using a lot of these folks, each one of these groups that we've met with, like for instance, the Tribe, DEQ, those types of entities are willing to participate in a workshop, and we think it will give it a broader context and be able to reach a broader group of the community.
Yeah, we definitely want to encourage everyone, everyone in the community to get involved in and put their two cents worth in in all of these workshops because it's going to be a collaborative community effort as to what we do here. Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to public comments. I know there's a gentleman here that wishes to give public comments. Time to do that now on matters that relate to city government business. So those that wish to come up can address the council.
Evening. My name is Jim Player, and I'm a very new resident to this community. I am a Vietnam veteran who is down in transitional housing. I was homeless this past summer, and that's why I'm here in this community. Maybe some of you people can identify with this, but one of the things which you started off your meeting with is the Pledge of Allegiance and end with, end justice for all. All I hope there's decency and justice for me. I know nothing about this community, but I came here from another state, and I was required by the State of Idaho to change my license, driver's license, and my registration to come here. And to do so, I have to go to the Motor Vehicles Division. Okay, I didn't even know where the world is at. I don't know about parking over there. I got a parking ticket only because it took two and a half to three hours for them to finally get to me. I was well aware of that when I was sitting there, but I couldn't do nothing about that. Now, I have a filed an appeal with the parking commissioner here, and it just was virtually ignored. He just said on it, per two, three, and five. Two, three, and five, deal with ignorance of the law, and you should know your time, and so forth like this. Well, I'm well aware of that, but I think decency should prevail. I did not directly violate the parking regulations of this city. Okay? It was because extenuating circumstances which had, you know, imposed it, and I could not get back in time for me to move my car. Okay? So the whole thing is I'm charged 10 bucks. I can't afford $10 for a ticket. I couldn't. I was homeless all summer. I couldn't afford any money. So I would hope that some decency prevails here, which will allow the forgiveness of this ticket. Now, you aren't going to deal with this tonight because it says you aren't going to deal with it tonight in your instructions here, but maybe somebody can get in touch with me, and some decency can prevail here because I can't afford 10 bucks for a ticket. I don't think any, should be that anyway. So maybe somebody would be willing to do this. I'm down in the transitional housing down here, and maybe somebody will contact me. If you need to get in touch with me, if that's the case you will do something, so be it.
Your name again, sir?
Jim or James Player, P-L-A-Y-E-R. I'm in 1516 East Sherman, apartment nine.
Okay, some of you in touch?
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to give public comment tonight?
Roy Vorgi, 2022 East Coeur d'Alene Avenue. And I'm kind of curious as when you're going to bring the bicycles or motor transportation, when you're going to bring them under regulations the same as the rest of the vehicles in this city. I think they should be licensed front and rear for identification and that, and without that, we have no way of knowing who they are.
Troy, do we have any history on licensing bicycles or any talk in the past?
Pardon?
I was asking our city administrator on the, on this issue.
We have not had licensing for some time. Would probably be at least 15 years, but we do have a great committee that could look into that, so I would suggest that we move that idea to our Ped Bike Committee for study.
Well, I appreciate that because that way there'd be a way of identifying who they are. Other than that, we have no way of identification.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Roy? I'm on the Ped Bike Committee, and that's actually been brought and studied. The current chairman is an engineer, and he's, he's lived in several different cities and studied extensively, and the, the licensing of bicycles restricts the, the use of bicycles. So the objective is to promote more use of bicycles in the city, and they just see that as a, as a restriction. So if people were hindered by that, then they would be less likely to get a bicycle and ride it. So currently is not of the directive of the Ped Bike Committee to push licensing of bicycles.
Well, I am completely deaf in the right ear, and my balance is off, but I do have a, a three-wheeled bicycle of my own and that that I use, but I have that equipped with turn signals and brake light. So I mean, I don't ride it after dark. It doesn't have no, but there's a lot of bicycles that are running around here, going in all directions at too late in the evening, and that's not right, and I don't agree with it. And like I said, without a license on them, I have no way of identifying who's riding those bicycles.
Well, I, I think there is an ordinance that does require lighting. I think it's, or maybe a state statute that does require lighting for bicycles after dark, and I do know of individuals that have been stopped, and they're generally not cited. They're just asked to, you know, get a light. But I know that licensing also, part of the study showed that it's, it's hard to enforce and usually just ends up being more trouble than, than what it's worth.
Well, if I see a bicycle riding after dark when it shouldn't be without lights on, what am I supposed to do?
Don't run him over.
Pardon?
Don't run him over, whatever you do.
Why not?
Because then you'd be in more trouble than him.
Well, but that's, that's the trouble. I mean, it can be done accidentally, not on purpose. I wouldn't do it deliberately, but I realize that the bicycle has got the right, the same right on the road as I do, but I don't want it going the wrong way and after dark without lights. Absolutely not.
Yeah, it's, it's been considered, sir.
And I think something should be, I've been told to, that it has to come from the state to do it, but the state representatives are bad as I don't know what because you can't find one. There's no telephone numbers, nothing but an address, and they're not home.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to give public comment? Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar.
Bicycles, oh my God. Maybe our new police chief knows about bicycles. They'd probably handle them differently in Arizona. Mr. Mayor, I would like to move for passage of the consent calendar, including Resolution 14039, approval of S114, acceptance of public improvements, approval of maintenance warranty agreement, and agreement to perform subdivision work, and approval of security for Lake Forest West. Also, approval of S203, acceptance of public improvements, approval of maintenance warranty, agreement for security for landings at Waterford 12th Edition. Approval memorandum of agreement for PUD 1-04M2, Bella Vie, fourth and...
Bella Reeve.
Bella Reeve.
There you go.
Bella Reeve. That mysterious place on the river, right? Fourth and fifth with Riverstone Waterfront LLC, and approval of memorandum of agreement with, for PUD 1-14, the circuit with active west development.
Second. We have a motion and a second and further discussion. Kiki?
I have one correction. If we...
If we could please make that under the discussion of the firearms amendment last meeting, I was quoted as saying the intent was protect those watching the event, and what I actually said was those watching as well as those marching is what the intent was, and I'd like it to reflect that I was being inclusive of all who attended an assembly.
I will adjust our, our motion to include Kiki's wordage.
Thank you.
Second.
I'll second that, too. Thank you. Sorry. Ron.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there, another correction on page 7, discussion regarding amendments to Municipal Code 9-52, such illegal possession of weapons at parades and public assemblies. It says at the bottom down here, "Motion by Ettinger, seconded by Ettinger." I don't think I seconded it. I think Amy seconded it.
Okay. So, we have another adjustment there, Wood.
We can include that in our, our consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. Thanks, you guys.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Amy.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. Move on to announcements. Announcements for any of the city council members. Kiki.
Amy had her hand, got you. Two things. Wanted to just update you on the library annex. We did have a, a full group meeting with the Library Foundation, the Library Board, the School District 271 Administration, the Librarian, and all unanimously agreed to move forward with the exploratory committee to find out if we can do a joint use in the facilities, providing a public library in one of the school locations. So, they were all excited about that and have moved that forward. Also, wanted to let you know that I did do some opening remarks for the Suicide Prevention Action Network Memory Walk this last weekend, and that since Coeur d'Alene had a five-year, ending in 2012, history of the highest suicide rates in Idaho, it's a really important thing, and especially this is in young males, this seems to be the target, but it's really an important thing to get that message out, and that group is very appreciative that the city is behind that effort to save the one and stop preventable tragedy from happening. So, I appreciated being able to go to that.
Great. Thank you. Amy.
And I wanted to share that we have a new event coming to downtown Coeur d'Alene in conjunction with the Coeur d'Fondo Bike Weekend, as well as Oktoberfest, and this is Coeur d'Alene's Crit Fest. So, it's a Criterium Bike Race that will be on Friday, September 26, downtown. The Criterium will feature four high-intensity bike races divided into USAC categories and governed by the USAC Racing Rules of Conduct, and you can find more information on the Coeur d'Fondo's website. So, this is an exciting spectator event for all to enjoy in downtown Coeur d'Alene.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other announcements by council?
We'll just have a comment, Mr. Mayor. Couple of comments. Number one, I would encourage council to relook at the, the parade ordinance, because I think one of the side effects of our action was to throw down a gauntlet to certain people who will raise a level of anxiety among our constituents, because they will want to test our ordinance. And by testing our ordinance, I believe we are going to encourage people to walk around in an aggressive manner during our parades, which is not something I would favor. I think that, I mean, I do believe in the Second Amendment, but I believe that all amendments, all rights do have limits, and if we were to allow concealed weapons during a parade, which is what I think Mr. Adams was pushing for, would be okay, but by banning all weapons, I believe we're going to encourage certain people to be aggressive in their defense. In other words, they're going to want to take it to court, and in order to do that, they're going to have to do some in-your-face activism to make that happen. And already, we see that we do have people who are attending the meeting tonight, aside from our police chief, who are wearing sidearms, and I don't think that was the kind of attention that we wanted when we consider public safety. Again, I support the Second Amendment, but I do believe rights have limits. I have a concealed carry weapon. I do not feel the need to carry in public. So, I just wanted to encourage council. I cannot bring up that issue again, because I voted against it, and parliamentary procedure says that if it's to be reconsidered, it must be brought forward by someone who voted with a majority. The other item I wanted to say is regarding the arch, which seemed to be in the news recently, the, the 3rd Street, or no, the, the 4th Street Arch, the main arch for McEwen, the, under the Rainbow, it's called. And I know that on council, I voted against it, because it was not a local artist, and they didn't really think it said anything about us, but it went through the process. It was approved. A lot of people worked on that committee, and it's there, and it's doing what art does, which is causing people to talk. So, in that respect, I like the arch, and this person thinks that we should leave it alone. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Wood.
I have to tell you, I was gone for too many days. I missed all the good stuff. I missed the parade ordinance. I missed the Lyleok Lane.
Oh, yeah, annexation.
Annexation. I missed the corridor commission not liking what we do or how we do things, so I apologize for taking off. It was good for me. My spirit is back. I've rejuvenated, kind of got away from all this for a while. I'm sorry I wasn't here for all this important stuff, but I'm back and trying to give you the 100%.
Woody, I think you've been here for a lot of important stuff, so taking a little break is good.
It was good for me. I appreciate you guys hanging it up, keeping it going, and even my, the business kept going without me, so.
It did?
Wow.
That's okay. That's a good sign, you know?
Take more vacation.
Maybe there's a future, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's good to be back.
Good to have you back. Okay, if no one else has anything, I have a couple of things. Appointment of Melanie Collette to the CDATV Committee and appointment of Ann Smart to the Library Board.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None seen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries? We will move on to the administrators' reports. Troy.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is your last meeting for the fiscal year, so we are about to start a new year, and we are starting it out and celebrating a ribbon cutting. Yesterday, the mayor attended a great ribbon cutting for Alliance Data. They have chosen to come to Coeur d'Alene with their newest customer care center. This business is a large business that has over, well, they have 135 companies that they work with across these great United States. Currently, this group in Coeur d'Alene has 100 employees. They hope to double that within the next six months, and the goal is to have 400 people working up at the building that was formerly the, in the ownership of Coldwater Creek. They also, at this ribbon cutting, made a huge donation, $50,000 to the United Way of Cootney County to support the Ready for Kindergarten program. So, we'd like to thank Alliance Data for choosing the city of Coeur d'Alene in which to do business, Jobs Plus for helping them bring, for helping bring them here. This group will pay its, its personnel, on average, 30, $45,000 a year, excuse me. We can't get it done without all these great volunteers. Today, actually, the police department hosted a luncheon to thank their volunteers. These volunteers have put in thousands of hours for the city of Coeur d'Alene, supporting our police department. This volunteer unit started out in 2004. They average 3,500 hours per year in volunteer time. The national average for this type of work would be $22.55 per hour. We start multiplying out the number of dollars that that saves the city, and it equals $78,925 for just one year. Since the inception of this program, the volunteers have logged 46,098 hours. If we were taking that times the $22.55 per hour, that is a savings to the city of Coeur d'Alene of $1,039,509. So, we thank them. The food looks like it was good, and we're grateful for all that they do in our community. And we have a new police chief. He is with us tonight, and he has been on the show, Coffee with the Mayor. Councilmember McEvers was there as well, and he brought forward some of the ideas that our chief has. It will be on Channel 19, and it will be airing coming up. So, thanks for doing that, chief, mayor, and councilmember Woody. There's a town hall meeting at our police department that occurs tomorrow evening, September 17, at 6 o'clock. Our police department headquarters is at 3818 East Schreiber Way. That is just off Kathleen Avenue between Highway 95 and Ramsey Road. The public is invited and encouraged to attend. Another great celebration coming up, the 19th Annual Mayor's Award in the Arts. It will be held on Wednesday, October 8, at 6:00 p.m. at the Hagadon Event Center. Honored this year will be Jenny Riplinger for Education in the Arts, Stephen Shortridge for Excellence in the Arts, and Ruth Pratt for Support of the Arts. Event is presented by the City of Coeur d'Alene Arts Commission, is free and open to the public. We have an opportunity for anything going on, and one of those is done by our own council member Miller, and it's the city poll in conjunction with our communications coordinator. Please go to our website. The question this month is, "Have you hiked Tubbs Hill in the past year?" We would love to hear from you, and if you haven't done it, get out and do it, and then come back and take the poll. Going forward, we have a wastewater superintendent, Sid Fredrickson. He started a project in 1999 to do the history. He has nearly completed with that particular task at this point in time and has done a very, very, very thorough job over those 15 years. Fredrickson has spent many hours researching the newspapers, the articles, the wastewater department logs, and he compiled, including photos and illustrations, an 89-page history of the city's wastewater treatment plant. So, for 75 years, he's greater than one page per year on the age of our treatment plant. Sid is very proud of the plant, all that it has done, and we are proud of what it does to take care of our environment. Two weeks ago, at this very same time, you met with the Spokane River Advisory Ad-Hoc Committee. I'd like to update you on the plan with that group. Staff, in working with the representatives on this committee, have come up with an action plan. They are bringing forward a recommendation to your Parks and Rec Commission, and we will be scheduling in October a workshop with you and the members of this ad hoc committee. We'll be able to sit down and look at what their recommendations are. At the same time, you'll be able to provide any input that you may have. So, staff will continue to dialogue with this great group of volunteers and bring forward an opportunity for you to sit with them. So, that's our update from two weeks ago at the council meeting. September means it's back-to-school time, and the Coeur d'Alene Public Library is running a back-to-cool time. Fall reading program for all ages started on the 9th of September in the Seagraves Children's Library and will continue through November 21st. A library card is the most important back-to-school supply, especially if you're in the library business. That's why in September, at this very library, there will be no charge for you to get or replace any lost children's library card. That will save a dollar. So, we encourage you to come out if your card is lost and/or sign up. We are also offering a North Idaho Reads Program this year, featuring regional author Jess Walter. Again, call the library if you have any questions or jump on the website. This Saturday, councilmembers and mayor, there's a great activity happening in association with the Coeur d'Alene Realtors. A $30,000 gift came to the city, and it is going into the equipment that you see on that slide. At Person Field, just off 15th Street, this new playground equipment will go in. This has been a collaborative effort with the Realtors, with the homeowners around that great area, with junior tackle football, and city crews who are installing it. This has been a great, great donation, and this ribbon cutting will occur this Saturday, Saturday, the 20th, at 11:00 a.m., and there'll be a little bit of work to do if you want to bring your work clothes, and we'll put some chips around all that great equipment. Junior tackle football will be going on, and it looks like the weather will be great. So, again, thanks for all that have been involved on that. What a great community we live in. This is a major asset. It's the Jewett House. It has been provided to the city from the Potlatch Corporation, and we, as citizens, are to be stewards of it. This lakefront home came to the city in 1917. There's a great donation, and many, many donations that have come forward to help maintain this 7,000-square-foot senior recreation center. It is currently closed for renovations. It will be done by the 30th. $35,000 in upgrades, all of which those dollars have been donated, will be taking place. The renovations include taking up the old carpet to expose hardwood floors. We'll take the carpet off the stairways and the second-story entry and restore the original woodwork. Other improvements going on, we will paint the interior of the first floor, and we're going to widen the circular driveway so as to provide better access for public safety vehicles. What a great project with no tax dollars going into it and great donations to keep that humming. If you have any questions or concerns, we have a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week hotline, as always, and if you're looking to become a city administrator, the city is taking applications at this time. We're also taking applications for our parks maintenance workers and a utility worker one. That ends my comments, councilmembers and mayor. Any questions?
Thank you, Troy. Any questions for Troy? Thank you very much. We'll move on to other business. We have Resolution Number 14-040, agreement with TW Telecom Holdings, Inc. for telephone and long-distance services. We have a staff report by Kirk Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I bring to you a proposal for a new telephone contract that will provide us $607 a month in real savings over existing contract. The contract was renegotiated due to it expiring on a three-year term, and so we called around. Actually, this one walked in, and somebody walked in and said, "Hey, we've got a great deal," and that is why I'm bringing this to you right now, because I wasn't aware that Time Warner Telecom could actually provide the phone lines that we were used to using. I thought the only players in town that could do this right now was Frontier and XO Communications. That's not the, not the, not the point. Anyways, we've got a, we've got a great deal here and a great offer that will save us money month to month.
We like saving money. Any questions, Woody?
It sounds so weird to be hearing that we still pay money for long distance. I guess we don't think of that with the cellphone world, right?
True.
But you still have hard line here. Is that it?
It, it is. These are all the, the internal phones that we've got in all the buildings, so when you call the water department, you call wastewater, you call the police department, you call the fire department, those all route in through those phone numbers and through these, these lines here.
Pretty wild. Dan.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for taking this out to bid.
Yeah.
It's been one of my sore points for a lot of things that we do. It seems we kind of re-up and re-up and re-up, and I appreciate the work you put into this to go out to bid.
I, I'm guilty of sitting, accepting the status quo with this one, because I thought that we were going to continue on with XO and that literally someone walked in and gave us this other deal and said, "Hey, we're, we're in town. We're doing business."
Well, take credit.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kirk? Thank you very much. So, we're looking for a motion.
I'd like to move for passage of Resolution 14040 with a, with a congratulations to Kirk attached to that.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a comment.
Steve.
As a small business owner, I know that landlines still have their place, so couldn't live without one.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm having a flashback here.
Okay. Roll call, please, Amy.
Adams?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have three hearings that are legislative hearings. There should be some sign-up sheets in the back for anyone wishing to speak on any one of these hearings. So, if there's anyone that's wishing to speak on our first one, I believe Troy has a sign-up sheet, and we will get the, so we're, legislative hearing number one is an amendment to the annual appropriation for fiscal year October 1, 2013. year October 1, 2013, through September 30, 2014. And we have a staff report. Thank you, Troy. Staff report by Vani Jensen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The good news tonight is that this is the last budget presentation you will hear until next summer. Since this is the last time we're going to talk about budgets for a while, I'd like to give you a quick look at where the city is financially as we close this fiscal year. The first couple of slides will update you on where the city is right now and where we will likely end up at the end of the fiscal year. This first slide is a 10-year historical look at the general fund's fund balance. It also shows increases and decreases year over year, total budgeted expenditures each year, and the dollar amount that the city was over or under the recommended 15% of fund balance to budgeted expenditures at the end of each fiscal year. The top row is staff's estimate for the end of fiscal year 2013-14. The estimate is slightly under last year's fund balance amount, which we are actually thrilled about as we consider all the things that we were able to accomplish this year without dipping into the fund balance, such as McEwen Park, buying Person Field, and finishing up the payout of a rather large settlement. The second slide shows the history of the forgone tax amount for the city of Coeur d'Alene and the tax increases that were taken each year. Over the last six years, the average tax increase was a half of a percent of the legally allowed 3%, and forgone taxes have increased by 149%. Some of the things that have made this and our healthy fund balance possible are new growth, reorganization of departments, and working with other entities such as the school district, Cootney County EMS, North Idaho College, and the Lake City Development Corporation, and the decision to move to being fully insured. This third slide shows the city's valuation for the last 10 years, the estimate for 2014, and the levy rate for each of those years with the estimated levy rate for the 2014-15 fiscal year. The interesting thing about this slide is that it really shows how the valuations affect the levy rates. In the years 2004 through 2007, the city increased the amount of tax dollars they levied by 3%, 3%, 2%, and 3%. But each of those years, the levy rate decreased. In the three years, 2010 to 2012, the city took a one-time 1.5% increase in fiscal year 2010-11, but the levy rate grew. Oops.
Vani, before you go, before you lose that track, are you still here?
Yep.
Can you explain to me the levy rate? I thought the levy rate would push the valuation as it goes up, that's good, and theoretically our tax rate goes down. Is that... Valuation goes up?
The levy rate will go down.
Will go down.
As long as everything else stays the same.
If everything... Okay. So when I look back on, well, 2010, the city's evaluation was pretty close to what it is today, but the levy rate is still higher today than it was then. Correct? Am I looking at that right?
Yes.
So I'm just wondering, if the valuation keeps going up, does the levy come down? And we're at 0.6, right? 654, and we were at 5.76?
Right. If the valuation continues to go up, and we don't levy any more taxes than what we are levying, then the levy rate would decrease.
Decrease. Okay. Thanks.
This final slide tonight details ordinance number 3493, which is the Amendment to the Annual Appropriations Ordinance for 2013-14, which is before you for approval tonight. The total citywide amendment is 5.3 million, which seems like a very large amount, but of this amount, more than half of it, 3.3 million, is for projects that were budgeted in fiscal year 2012-13 and were completed in fiscal year 2013-14. So those are carryovers from the previous year. This includes McEwen Park and wastewater's tertiary treatment project. 1,21,000 of this amendment was funded with donations. That includes the Front Avenue Project and the Memorial Field Grandstand Reriff. 51,000 came from the school district for a police vehicle, and 19,000 came from state and federal grants. The remaining 941,000 included in this budget amendment is only 1.2% of the $77.8 million budget. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions for Vani?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. I thought we fixed the sanitation fund. Why do we have to... Why is it under or over?
It actually was... The expenditures were higher this year than what we had budgeted.
Is it... Now, Troy, I thought we... Didn't we address that with a rate increase last year? I didn't think we would be short in that fund again.
We're catching up on that fund.
Okay.
And it was greater volume on the expenses than we'd anticipated, so that's what we have to amend for, which is good, because we get to bill for that.
Okay. All right. And then, just a general comment, which is I got a lot of feedback on this from the public, even more than the budget thing, because people were like, "Why are you over budget? Why are you over budget?" And so I had to explain, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but what we're doing is we're paying off things that were budgeted in prior years, but got carried forward into the next... Into last year, or this current year that's closing.
Right.
And so we have to account for that. And the way we account for it is, we're amending the budget now to include those expenses that came from the previous years. And then when we do our audit, then that will fix the prior years so that they come into line as well. Am I correct with that?
Well, the prior years are really... Don't need to be... We don't change the budget.
They don't need to be fixed.
So, yeah, there's no fixing happening, but, yeah. Almost every year, we have projects that aren't completed at September 18th. And when we do the budget so early in June, we don't know how far we're going to be on those projects. So a lot of times, we, instead of including that in the budget and inflating our budget to make it look like we have a huge increase, we wait until we get to the end of the year, see how far the... You know, how much more we still have of the project that wasn't completed the first year, and then we'll amend for it, as opposed to inflating the budget for a project that's really been budgeted already.
And I appreciate that. And the state of Idaho allows us to do this every year. This is kind of a reconciliation, because we can't count for extra expenses like the money that came in from the school district for the police car. That stuff was unanticipated, so now we're making the accounting, we're balancing the books effectively.
Right. The only thing that the state code doesn't allow is we cannot use, obviously, levy more property taxes.
Yeah, we can't go out and grab more.
So anything amended in the budget has to be from other new revenues or fund balance that was from... Leftover from previous years.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Vani? Steve?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Vani, I'd voted against the budgets that, you know, the last two budgets that contain this. So I was just thinking, and I understand, and I get it, that it's carryover. I guess I'm still opposed to, you know, a few of the items in here. So last time, I guess symbolically, I, you know, I voted against it. I'm just wondering now, what would happen if the council voted this down? Voted down the amendment? Then what happens?
Well, we'd have to put a note in our audit report that we were out of compliance. And I don't know at that point. That's probably my critically questioned...
And if we're gonna... If I may, if we were going to do a general obligation bond, say, next spring, and that was looked at by the underwriters that review the city, that would look like a red flag if you had a consumer credit report. That would be the red flag on the city's credit file, is that we had gone out of compliance.
So the money would still be carried over regardless? Because it's there. It's... The projects are going, the money's there. It's still going to get carried over and...
Correct. You've been approving everything along the way, so it would be a challenge if you were, as a councilmember, said, "You know, I didn't know about the tertiary treatment expansion phase, since we've been working on that for some time." Yes, those dollars have been spent. We're doing the accounting, as I am challenged to do as your finance director. And so that would be all in the books. It just wouldn't be a compliant process if council said no to this budget amendment. Our goal as finances, that you know about all this. We're keeping track of all this.
Sure.
But everything in here has come through to you over time.
Would there be any recourse from the state? Because we're required to balance the budget.
And... Well, we will balance the budget. You just may not be in agreement with the way that it's put out there. Would there be any re... From the state? It wouldn't look good, because we have loans with the Department of Environmental Quality, so that probably would prohibit us from going forward, since we're out of compliance with all the governing rules that we have. So yes, it would look... It would be frowned upon by anybody that wanted to deal with the city on a financial basis.
Okay. Well, I have more questions, but...
I'll spare you. Thank you.
Why spare him, Steve?
Yeah. It's kind of moot, really.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for...
Oh, we got a hearing.
Oh, we have to open it, don't we? Darn, I'm so close.
So, any other questions for Vani while she's here? So I wanted to open the public speaking portion of this. I have the list, and I have no names on this list of anyone wishing to testify. Again, calling if anybody wishes to comment on the budget. None being seen, I will now close the public testimony portion of this and ask for council's action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Council Bill 14-1018.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Amy, if you could read the title, please.
An Ordinance Amending Ordinance 3469, the Annual Appropriation Ordinance for the Fiscal Year Beginning in October 1, 2013, Appropriating the Sum of $83,192,716, which sum includes additional monies received by the City of Coeur d'Alene in the sum of $5,309... Or $339,222, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, provide for the publication of a summary of this ordinance, and providing an effective date thereof.
Thank you. Now, roll call, please.
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
No.
Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and adopt Council Bill 141018 by having read its title once only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? No discussion seen. Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will move on to our second legislative hearing tonight. Again, we will... This is Resolution Number 14-041, Fee Increases for Municipal Services Department, Parks Department, and Water Department. Troy, I will CD. Is there anyone on that list? So Troy, if you could give a staff report on that.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. We are here to have a public hearing about fee increases. And if you would indulge me, I'd like to bring Mr. Greenwood forward to address those under the Parks Department, including the cemetery lots. And then I will work with you on questions regarding the door-to-door solicitation and the water items. So we'll collaborate on this particular one. Mr. Greenwood, share with us.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So today's paper had some mistakes in it about my fee increases.
Say it isn't so.
So I would like to clarify some of those. We are not changing our opening and closing in the cemetery. Those were changed in 2010. They remain the same. The press added some information in that it was inaccurate, so that's what I'm here to talk about. What we're doing is, in the staff report, you'll see that the cemetery lots show single and double. It's crossed, it struck out a cremane retreat. That is really a double lot, so we're just cleaning that verbiage up a little bit, so there's no fee increase in that. We are providing a vich... Sorry, a niche vase, which we haven't provided before. We've had clients come in and ask about them. They usually go to the funeral homes and get those, and we glue them on the niche wall themselves. So we've got a few of those in stock now, so those are available for the public to purchase from us, and so that's a new service that we're providing. So that's one of the changes. Additionally, we're seeing more and more in the industry, people are actually buying flat headstones online, and they want to ship them to us directly. And so there's an opportunity for us to do that flat work, where we actually apply a collar. So there's a, by ordinance, there's a four-inch collar that goes around the flat stone, and we can do that in-house and provide that service to the public and also set that stone for them. So that's the new service that we're providing for that one as well. So there's no changes, just a couple of new ones in that. The alcohol security permit is going up $4. That's because we subcontract that out, and those fees are going up through our subcontractor, who is a security firm that does that security for us on those alcohol permits. And then the new one is McEwen. We've never had a pavilion as grand as the one we have now. So it's twice as big as the one in City Park, so we thought that the way we split this up are these fees that you see here now. And so those are really just new fees that we're seeing today, and not some real increases. So I just, again, want to clarify about the press talking about some things that they got wrong a little bit. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Questions for Bill. Woody?
Steve... Bill, on the pavilion, have we always done a resident, non-resident?
That's correct, yes. It's been that way for, Councilman, for, I think, about five years, four or five years now.
And you haven't got any pushback on that?
No.
Thank you.
Dan?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Greenwood, so we had discussed this about the pavilion. I think we were out there looking at it, and you were talking about, have you figured out how to separate the sides?
Yeah, we're going, if you were to split the pavilion from east to west, so you have a north and a south half. And so we've yet to have a conflict in that two folks, you and Councilman Evers, have separate sides, where there's two, you know, going at the same time.
I don't want him on my side.
Hatfield and McCoy.
You'd actually be the same. You wouldn't have a separation. You'd be one big happy family, right? So we've done that, and it's been working just fine.
Excellent.
So we've got some stanchions that we pull between those two areas and separate it off, so if you wanted to rent one half, the public still would have access to the other.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Bill?
Thank you.
The Municipal Service Department is bringing forward a new fee that you will be looking at what the door-to-door solicitation business license looks like at a later date. So because this has to be noticed in a public hearing, we are proposing the staff time necessarily necessary to put this together, as the fee is being $50. If you didn't adopt a door-to-door solicitation process, the fee would not be applicable. Jumping into the Water Department...
Troy, just a question on that. Is that license in line with what post falls or other cities charge for their solicitor licenses?
You know, I don't...
I don't know. I'm sorry.
I think it is in line with that, correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good point. So jumping into Water...
Yeah.
Thank you. We are proposing a couple of changes in there. Let's go through some of this. We're lowering a fee. The one-time bulk water rate is being reduced from $25 to $5. We don't do that very often, so I'd like to lead with that one. Council, you have a bulk water rate program, and in so doing, the commercial entities that use this bulk water, typically for sweepers, go and access this water. They need to share with us, since it's a self-serve process, how much water they're actually putting in. Unfortunately, we have... We're bringing forward a penalty for those folks that don't let us know how much water us know how much water they're using from the City of Coeur d'Alene. And as you would probably guess, there's someone that's not doing a very good job of letting us know about that, to the tune that if you don't bring us this log sheet in the, after one month, it's $40. Well, unfortunately, that isn't enough because we have entities that haven't brought it to us in two months. So we've doubled that. And we actually have a fee that if you don't come and see us after three months, it's $120, so as to get some compliance with commercial entities that are using our water. Improper operation of water facilities.
Troy, just a second please. Steve had a question.
Troy, what's their options for getting the log sheet to you? Can that be scanned and emailed or faxed or?
Yep.
Okay. So you don't require them to physically bring it down here?
We prefer not.
Okay.
We prefer not. And then we can bill them for the water that they've used. So yes, we've made that side of it easy. Good point. So moving on, we have improper operation of water facilities fee. This is a challenge with some folks that are in the plumbing business when they're in the well sets that are out along, the meter sets, excuse me, out along the city streets. We are happy to come and provide that service when they want the water turned off. We're happy to come back and turn it on. The fee for that is no fee. It's a really important area of our city to keep safe. If we find someone that's not choosing to have the city do it, we will warn them. If on a second offense, they've said, "No, I don't really want to let the city know to come out and turn this on," or "turn it off," or whichever way they're doing their work, we'll increase that. Our goal is to get compliance so that the Idaho Bureau of Licensing stays happy and those folks that oversee our water system. This is basically reinforcement for compliance, saying we're happy to work with those folks that need the water turned off at the street. Just let us know so we can come out and do that. All of these fees are set up so as to cover the cost of service and/or show that there is a penalty, that if you don't comply with turning in a log, you can't use the city's water at no cost. It's a service, it's a fee for service. We're delivering the goods, and we're not finding out what it is that they're using. So those are the proposals on water.
Any further questions? Woody?
Troy, we talked a little today about the improper operation of water facilities. I seem to have a problem with, that I can't go out and turn off my own water if I'm having a problem. But you said, "Well, we'd be more than happy to come." Would that be at nighttime and on weekends and Saturday when most of my water problems happen?
We'd hope they are from nine to five, based on the staff that we have, but we can accommodate some weekend activity because we have people that are on-call to do that. So this ideally would be some scheduled turnoffs of that water or turned back on.
And here, let me just go a little deeper because of this. It seems like it hasn't been that long that we've required this. Am I pretty correct? I know you're, the water guys aren't here, and I'm sorry, but we didn't always do this. Plumbers used to be able to turn off the water, change a sink, change a hot water tank. I guess, I guess my question is, we require plumbers and all these guys to have all these licenses and to have the stamp on everything, and yet they aren't allowed to turn off the water meter. And it just, it's kind of like the fire alarm system with me, you know? Sprinklers, don't get me going on it. So I know it's a kind of a tough pot to put you in, is addressing something that you really don't know. Just, it seems like it's almost like that bicycle thing. We can't do anything for the bike riders, but we're going to fine you money if you turn off your own water system, even if it's a plumber who's licensed in the state, all that. I don't expect a good answer from you, but I just...
I probably can deliver on that.
I need to get it off my chest, you know? It just seems silly.
I would suggest to you that because it's becoming a problem for our water department, it means that there's those folks, I mean, I've got pictures of water meter sets that have been filled up with rock and everything else because they've gone in and wanted to show that they could turn the water back on, broken the edges off that particular valve, and then filled it back in with rock. We don't have any fee to say, "Hey, that's not the way in which to treat this particular area." So again, unfortunately, some of the abusers, because, you know, as a good plumber, if they're out there and turn the water off and turn it back on and do it properly, how are we going to know? This is really those folks that aren't able to do that properly that can get us in trouble on a health system issue. And those are city property. You know, I theoretically could have people go and open up parks in the morning, but that's city assets. We don't really want that to occur. So we're protecting the city system, your water system, and it is a very vital part to our health. So we don't expect to collect much revenue. I mean, that would be one question. How much money do we want from any of this, other than collecting it from the logbooks, which we have earned that? We would like to do this in such a manner that we collect none of those fees. But in the event that it goes sideways, I'll call it, we want to be able to penalize those people that have abused the system.
So would that still work along the idea of backflow devices? Have we started going after them for not doing it properly or not having it checked or...
Correct.
We're already there?
Correct.
Jeez. Never thought Idaho would have all these rules, you guys. I just...
It just, I think what it...
Public safety. I guess I can go with that.
The exposure that we have with contaminated water is very large. That's why the backflow tests are so important, done annually. Commercial properties do it. That is one of our biggest risks for the health of your community. So we take it very seriously.
Touche. Thank you.
Any further questions? Troy? Okay, so this is a legislative hearing. I had a sign-up sheet here. Did not have anyone's name on the sign-up sheet. We'll open up the public testimony for anyone else that is not signed up that wishes to testify. No one's seen, we will close public testimony and seek council action.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve Resolution 14-041 authorizing fee increases and one fee decrease for municipal services department, parks department, and water department.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Amy, roll call, please.
Gookin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will move on to our third legislative hearing, you know?
It's good you remembered that. That rarely happens.
So our, this legislative hearing is a sale of city-owned real property by sealed bid, a 50-foot square parcel located at the intersection of Ninth and Locust Avenue, and further described by the county alternative identification number, AIN of 199985. And a staff report. Looks like, Troy, you're up again.
Thank you. We're bringing forward this so that we can go and liquidate this 2,500-square-foot lot. This is where the subject property is located. It came into city ownership after buying a water company. It has not found any use by any of the city departments, nor by your water department. The most probable use of this property would be an adjoining property owner, and the City of Coeur d'Alene will contact both of those property owners. We will go through the full announcement. We're setting a minimum bid of $1,000. And in so doing, we'll be able to liquidate this, put it back on the tax rolls. You've looked at this once before, so I'm moving through it quite rapidly. And in so doing, that is the map on where it is located. So it's only 2,500 square feet. Planning department doesn't have anything that could go on it, other than assembling it with one of the other parcels in the area. It is this property right here. So that is a quick look at how we go about liquidating property. This, we do not do this very often at the City of Coeur d'Alene. According to state statutes, we move pretty slow on any liquidation of property, so you're deeming it surplus. We are then taking it out for a public bid, noticing it, and going through these steps. It will probably be eight weeks in getting a 2,500-square-foot lot off of the city ownership. I've only done this one other time, and so trading real estate is a much better way for us to do business. So if somebody wanted to trade us for this 2,500-square-foot lot, that would be easier to do. Any questions on behalf of the liquidation of...
Dan, Mr. Mayor, Troy, so hypothetical question, what happens if it doesn't sell?
That's a great question. We have come up with some ideas, and the 2030 visioning plan has suggested some. Maybe we partner with a group that would like to have a garden, could oversee that. Your staff is going to work very hard with those property owners that abut this piece of property. 2,500 square feet isn't even a ginormous garden, actually. Soil is not perfect, but I know we could add compost to the deal and get a garden area in there.
And where would the cash go?
It would go to the water fund. It's a water asset.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Troy? Again, being a legislative hearing, we will open the public comment. I have no one wishing to testify on the sheet that I have. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify in this? Okay, none seen, we will close the public comment portion of this and ask for council action. Not everybody at once.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move for a passage of city, sale of city-owned property by sealed bid, 50-square-foot parcel or 2,500 square feet located in the intersection of Ninth and Locust Avenue, and further described by the county alternate identification number, 199985.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? No discussion seen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. See if we have a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we enter into executive session as provided by Idaho Code 672345, subsection B, to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, and subsection C, to conduct deliberations concerning labor